I look like a news broadcast area. I've got computers all over the place.
I'm having a problem with the live stream.
We need to do the live stream?
I'm gonna, we're gonna start the meeting because we are recording and I know we've got a long meeting. I'll keep, I'll keep trying it. Okay, so good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining the meeting of the City of Kingston Planning Board and what was to be a joint meeting with the Heritage Area Commission. My name is Suzanne Cahill. I am the Planning Director for the City of Kingston, the organizer for our virtual meeting. Today is Tuesday, March 30th, 2021. As I said earlier, the meeting with the Heritage Commission has been postponed and they will be meeting on Thursday to discuss the Hutton Brickyards Coastal Consistency Review. So this evening, Hutton Brickyards Expansion, located at 188 and 200 North Street, will be taken up just by the Planning Board. We will hold a public hearing and then initiate discussion. Before we begin our meeting, I want to go over a few meeting guidelines to help navigate the system as efficiently and respectfully as possible. We ask that our members of the public and press remain muted and off-camera for the length of the meeting. As the organizer, I reserve the right to mute anyone who unmutes themselves. Board members and city staff will control their own mute button. As good practice, we ask that you mute yourself if you are not speaking to avoid background noise and feedback. If a board member or staff wishes to speak, they will raise their hand. The chairperson will call on them before they speak by stating their name clearly for our audio listeners. The board member will then unmute themselves, state their name, and speak clearly, muting after finished. All of our meetings are recorded. Both video and written transcriptions will be made available to the public on the city's website at a later date. In lieu of public speaking, we requested all comments to be received by 2:00 P.M. on Friday, March 26th, 2021. Comments could have been emailed to Suzanne Cahill, Planning Director, at skhill@kingston-ny.gov, mailed or placed in the Dropbox outside of City Hall. Written comments have been posted on the city website and provided to all board members in advance of the meeting. Persons wishing to speak were asked to contact the office in advance of the meeting. So as the public hearing is called, those who have already indicated they wish to speak will be called upon first. For all those who are joining by audio and did not pre-register but wish to speak for a hearing matter, please text the following number, 845-443-0416, with your name and the agenda item and address. Again, text your name and the item number and address of the public hearing you wish to speak on to, 845-443-0416, if you wish to be called to speak for the public hearing. If you have any audio wish issues, send a text message to, again, to the same number, 845-443-0416. I will repeat the number again, but be aware that phone calls will not be answered during the meeting. Again, the number to text is 845-443-0416. As the organizer for today's meeting, I reserve the right to lock and pause the meeting to eject anyone who has behaved inappropriately or to enter into attorney-client conference if needed. Materials for this meeting may be found on the City of Kingston website at www.kingston-ny.gov. Once on the homepage, click on the joint meeting in the calendar and you will find links to the agenda and meeting documents. Thank you for your patience during these difficult times and on behalf of both, you know, of the City of Kingston Planning Board, I wish you and your family good health. I now call the meeting to order at 6:08 P.M. and turn it over to Chairman Wayne Platt to introduce the Planning Board members and reopen the public hearing.
Thank you Suzanne. Good evening, everybody. My name is Wayne Platt. Welcome to the Tuesday, March 30th, 2021 Special Planning Board Meeting. We'll begin with introductions. Again, my name is Wayne Platt. I'm the chairman. We also have Charles Palaco. Is he here? There you go. Robert Jacobson?
Here.
Matt Gillis?
Here.
Kevin Roach?
Here.
Vince Archer? Is Vince here?
Yes.
Okay. Also, again, we have Suzanne Cahill, the Planning Direct. Ila D-Day is the Assistant Planner. We also have, is Alderman Toleman here?
Yes.
Hey Alderman, Don Toleman, who is the Planning Board Liaison.
Yeah, I'm here.
We have Daniel Gartenstein, Assistant Corporation Counsel. We will begin tonight's meeting with the public hearing. Item number one is 200 North Street. It's a special permit amendment for additional hospitality, spa and restaurant accommodations, as well as additional parking and a new entrance off of Linsley Avenue. Section Block and Lot is 48.84-1-4. Secret Determination Zone RFH and Triple R. Heritage Area and Coastal Zone. It's in Ward 9. HBYQOZBLLC is the applicant owner. Sue, do we have anybody wishing to speak for the public?
We do. I will call, when I call your name, please unmute yourself if you are on the phone. Generally, star six will unmute yourself. Sarah Wank?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, hi, everyone. I can't see you on YouTube, but I'm watching you. I'm just listening on the phone. So yeah, I submitted some comments in writing, but I just wanted to add to that briefly that in addition to the concerns about access on North, on our North Street, there are concerns about waterfront access, public access to the waterfront that's, that's meaningful, that's ADA compliant. And I understand that possibly the plans that have been submitted to, for this meeting include that, though my quick perusal of them made it seem that they were not going to be in effect until summer 2022, which seems confusing. The woodchip path that's there now is, is not great, especially on the turn from the parking, the Kingston Point parking lot. The stretch that goes over to North Street is muddy and full. It's just very difficult to pass. And that, and I don't, I know that the zoning enforcement officers said that the applicant had met their obligations in terms of access, but there was no explanation of how that was the case. So I, I think that, I feel like this process is being rushed a lot for the convenience of the developers since they're already taking reservations for their site, even though they don't have site plan approval yet. And I really hope that all the committees and commissions and boards involved will take their time and make sure that this project serves the public as well as the developer. And also just wanted to mention briefly that I have some concerns about the parking lot on Linsley that appears to require the removal of an enormous swath of beautiful old-growth forest. So I hope that all efforts will be made to avoid too much natural destruction in the service of a parking lot, especially given that the project applicant has now purchased that big mansion, which has all kinds of space around it that might be suitable for parking. But I guess the main, the thing I'd like to leave you with is that this is a project that deserves careful, careful consideration. And the fact that they want to open in May is not a reason to rush it. So thank you, and I will mute myself again.
Thank you. Okay, should we, who else do we have?
Okay, we should be live streaming now. Samantha Morinville? Samantha Morinville? If you can unmute yourself, if you're on the phone, hit star six. I will move on. We'll come back. Stefan Lebowitz? Hello? Stefan Lebowitz? Okay, Tom Polk?
Hello, this is Tom Polk.
Hi, Tom.
Are you ready?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm getting some feedback from the, the live stream. Let me mute that. Good evening, members of the Planning Board. My name is Tom Polk and I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak at this public hearing on the 200 North Street Special Permit Amendment. I urge you not to amend the current special use permit at this time. The existing site plan and proposed changes do not comply with the city zoning code. Section 405-25, Paragraph A, created the Rondow Creek and Hudson Riverfront districts and their purpose is clear. I quote, "To afford priority to water-dependent uses, achieve public access to the coastal area, and control development." It goes on to say, "It is the purpose of the districts to provide opportunities for permanent public use and access to the Hudson River," unquote. Paragraph B of this section lists as a right uses of waterfront property. For other uses, such as the applicant's proposed additions, Paragraph C, zoning use incentives, states that for such uses to be granted, a special use permit is required that, quote, "The owner dedicates meaningful, permanent public access along and where appropriate across the property to the dry shore area," unquote. As I looked at the site plan, I do not see any such public access. Without this access, the application for the amendment should be rejected. I would draw your attention to the Ulster County Planning Board's recommendation of April 3rd, 2019 regarding this issue. I quote, "As designed, the applicant's project is blocking a regional and state effort to serve its site-specific needs. A means to maintain public access at all times should be the result." The required modification, according to the County Planning Board, states this. "Access to the regional trail system should not be precluded at any time by this project. The city should require the development of a public access plan that clearly shows those areas that are open for public use versus those where access is controlled by the project. At a minimum, the city should retain control of its public road, North Street, with public access permitted beyond the gate with trails and sidewalks along the project frontage available to the public. Finally, as consistent with the requirements along the strand, the public should be allowed access to the trail from Kingston Point and a connection from this trail should be made to the trail/sidewalk along North Street," unquote. I would disagree with the County Planning Board regarding the gate on North Street, which I have previously commented on. But the general position that a public access plan is needed has my wholehearted support. And I urge you to bear this in mind. I would also like to address the issue of what constitutes public access. I referred earlier to Section 405-25, which states, quote, "The owner dedicates meaningful, permanent public access along and where appropriate across the property," unquote. Section 405-31, Paragraph B, 1A, uses slightly different language when explaining the specific public benefit features necessary for special permits. I quote, "Provision of improved public access accessible to persons other than occupants to waterfront properties along the water's edge, including pedestrian walkways, open space areas, and promenades, which all design to form a continuous public right-of-way through the entire RF-R and RF-8 districts. Where public access is provided, the following guidelines shall be used. Access should be in the form of a permanent easement or the granting a fee title to the City of Kingston," unquote. The paragraph goes on to detail the dimensions and the paving of such access and that it must meet a standard approved by the Kingston City Engineer. Here again, there is nothing in the application regarding a permanent easement or granting of title to the city. I have not found any documentation regarding the city engineer's approval for a standard paving, paving. Last, I suggest that you review the zoning interpretation issued by the city zoning officer on March 22nd. His letter states that, quote, "It is my interpretation that your client, the project applicant, is providing meaningful, meaningful public access to the Hudson River by allowing public access through their property to the Empire State Trail and the Hudson River," unquote. The only current access to the Empire State Trail is built by a North Street, a public road. As such, it is not the property of the owner. The applicant has properties on each side of North Street, but they have done nothing to provide permanent and meaningful public access to the land they actually own. I would also contend that the gate on North Street actually reduces the public's ability to access the waterfront and in fact prevents meaningful and permanent public access. For these reasons, I strongly urge you to uphold Sections 405-25 and 405-31 and decline the amendment until the site plan is revised to comply with its requirements. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Lee Kalish?
Hi. Good evening.
Hi, Lee.
Hi there. I'm just going to say to the board and to all of you, thank you for your service and for giving me the opportunity to speak. I don't think there's much I can add to what Tom Polk just was so eloquently spoke about. I, I feel like, I mean, in very simple form, I feel like access for the public from Kingston Point very simply should just continue along the river till it gets to the park. I'm looking at the public access site plan and it feels, I guess, two points. One, it feels like they've gone out of their way to push us off and onto North Street and, and around as opposed to giving us the river access and views that is clearly laid out in the 405-25 provisions. And I think the other point to make is why are we pushing people onto a street where we're going to have to deal with the, the residents that live there and the cars that are going in and out? I mean, we have kids on bicycles that are going to get on a trail at Kingston Point. And why are we putting them on a street with out-of-town people coming in and out and deliveries and whatever else is happening on that street? Why wouldn't we leave them on the promenade along the river and have them go into the park? It just seems, it seems like a simple thing for you guys to look at and, and come up with a different solution. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kalish.
We will go back. Samantha Morinville? Samantha, if you are on the phone, you can hit star six to unmute. Okay. Stefan Lebowitz? Stefan? Stefan, is that you? Okay, Wayne, I have nobody else.
All right, um, I think that we should have the applicants introduce themselves.
So, Mr. Chairman, this is Joe Ariel. I'm counsel with Veneziano and Associates on the project. And here tonight with Kevin McManus. Kevin, I think you've got other members of your team you could introduce. If, because I'm not sure who's on.
Yes, we have Christina Ducham and Zach Hall from KD Ducham Architecture.
And I think, you know, the, both the public and the planning commission have seen, obviously, the, the plan that we seek to have approved. We're happy to, to walk through that plan again. I, I think it might be more useful to have Kevin perhaps describe some of the responsive submissions that have been made and then just kind of move on to procedurally what we hope can be accomplished this evening. I do want to say, and first of all, let me thank the board for putting together the meeting. But I also want to say, because it may, it, it may immediately address some of the issues that were raised during public comment here. It's not our intention this evening to seek site plan approval tonight. And we are, we continue to work with city planning and other city agencies to address their concerns, the concerns raised by this commission and the public, and intend to continue to do so. So if, if that's all right with the, with the chair and, and with Sue, I don't know whether you want to describe where we're at or have Kevin sort of summarize anything that we've done since. We're kind of at your, at your disposal as far as how you'd like to proceed.
Well, Joe, I know we are in receipt of the, of the public access plan. It was just submitted, I just, within the last couple of days. And, you know, for tonight's meeting, our purposes, I believe, are going to just basically make the secret determinations and, and, you know, push off the, we'll take up the topic of, of the public access plan at our regular April meeting. I mean, that, that's, that we're at, we're with that?
I, I think that's right. I appreciate that clarification, Mr. Chairman. And I think that's, that's, you know, how we expect to proceed this evening, too.
Yes, if, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, my, Kevin McManus here. Good evening. I, I just wanted to add that we did submit a draft. We've actually done some work on it. We know that we need to do some more work with the planning department and clearly in response to the comments that have been raised this evening and in prior weeks. So just also want to point out that the, 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 we have some improvements to site plans that were already approved. So we, we pretend, we are proposing to open those which are already approved by the, the City of Kingston in prior site plan approval. So we're not opening anything up that hasn't already been approved, just for clarification.
And also, in addition to, you know, we're, we're appreciative of the, of the updated public access plan. We still have to take a look at that. I know we had an interpretation sent in from the zoning enforcement officer. There are still some outstanding issues. There's a laundry list of outstanding issues that need to, to happen, you know, before approval. And like, like I said, tonight, I, I hope the rest of the board feels this way. I think we're just going to make secret determinations and we're happy to take up the rest of the, you know, we'll continue with the public access plan at our regular April meeting. Anybody on the board have any comment about that? Matt?
Well, is there anything we can do now just to facilitate moving this access plan forward? Because, I mean, I can't tell you how many months we've been hearing about the gates. And if there's anything we can do to push that ball down the road and get to some conclusion.
Well, I think that, you know, having taken a quick, a, a, a quick look at this plan, there, there are provisions in, in the, in the, the plan that, that deal with access, like to the, to the, the Empire State Trail, you know, to have access to the river. And I, you know, I still need to take a better look at it myself and, and I, I think that it would be better served if we brought up that whole topic and other topics at, at the regular April meeting. I mean, if you want, if you have any questions now, you certainly could raise them.
No, we can go with that.
Anybody else? And, and this is, and one, one thing, Chuck, the, the, the public access plan that has been submitted by the applicants is currently available on the city's website. So folks can take a look at it there. Chuck, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm looking at the paper that, that we received from the city engineer. There's going to be a lot of questions from me on this unless we go over it. I don't know if these are going to be answered in time for us to even deal with the seeker.
Well, um, I, I, we can go through the, the, the part one and two of the EAF tonight. And as I mentioned, there's, you know, there's a, there's a laundry list of, of things that still need to be clarified. And certainly the city engineers' concerns are part of that laundry list. So we're not trying to avoid talking about them. I know you, I, you and I have spoken, there are a lot of concerns. And, you know, I think that, for, you know, just for tonight's purposes, we can deal with the, with the, with the, with the seeker part. And then we will certainly take up your concerns at the April meeting, you know? If that, if that satisfies you right now.
That satisfies me.
Okay, yeah. And the applicants are aware of that, too. So.
Yes, we are.
Anybody else? Okay. Um, I have a lot of, I'm lacking paperwork in front of me. I've got all these computers. So, so you've got the completed EAF form, correct?
Yeah, everyone should have received my email earlier this afternoon that had the completed part one of the full EAF that the applicants had submitted with their application paperwork. It also included the blank forms of the part two and part three, which the agency, you, as the lead agency, are responsible to fill out and complete. So the object of tonight's meeting is to go through, hopefully you've had a chance to look at what the applicant has completed. And the object of tonight is to go through part two, line by line, question by question, and discuss, deliberate, ask questions, and then hopefully create an answer. And in doing so, we can also, at the same time, simultaneously create the answers for the part three, which is more of a descriptive, a descriptive form to explain how the impacts can be mitigated or how the project can be modified to address the issues that are identified as potential environmental impacts. Do you want to share your screen?
Yeah, I was just going to add, is that what, okay, let me see here.
The shared screen will show the completed forms, right? So there's the part two, the three?
The squared, the shared screen is going to show you part two, which is the questions that you need to run through and answer based on information that you have received.
Is that too small like that? Do you want me to zoom in a little bit?
That's good for me.
Okay, I can, I can even go in a little bit more, let's see. So are you going to read them or how do you want to do this?
Um, Wayne, would you like me to read the questions?
Would love for you to read those questions.
I thought as much. Okay, so question number one. First of all, is everybody comfortable? Have you got, had the opportunity to read part one? The, the owner's responses to the basic environmental review questions, giving you background information. I'll take that as a yes. Okay, so part one, impact on land. The proposed action may involve construction on or physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site. So you have some sub-questions here to help you determine if that is a yes or a no. We can start with A. The proposed action may involve construction on land where depth to water table is less than three feet. The reference there that you see refers you to questions in part one where they've responded. I did look that up and the water table is where the construction is located on average greater than, I believe, four something feet. I don't have. on average greater than, I believe, four something feet. I don't have it in front of me. Yes, the average depth to the water table in the project site is greater than 4.25 feet. So I answered that question, no. Does the board concur? Thumbs up or down if you concur. We'll do it that way. Matt? Okay. Okay, that's an agreement. The proposed action may involve construction on slopes of 15% or greater. That I did, I I think that is a moderate to large impact. I don't know about the rest of the board. Everybody agrees. Okay, that would be a moderate to large. The proposed action may involve construction on land where bedrock is exposed or generally within five feet of existing ground surface. Any thoughts on that? Wayne, Chuck?
Are we going with a no on that one? No.
I would say no on that. That's my thought. Anybody else on the board have any thoughts on that?
I'm saying no.
I'm I'm saying no. I'm saying no also, but that's a lot of sand and clay that I didn't.
Okay. The proposed action may involve the excavation and removal of more than 1,000 tons of natural material. That is a no, I believe. Notice. Proposed action may involve construction that land that continues for more than one year or in multiple phases. Well, this project is a multiple phase project. It will happen over a series of years. I I put that as a moderate to large impact may occur.
I agree.
Okay. The proposed action is or may be located with a coastal erosion hazard area. And that is, I put that as a no or small to moderate in or small, no, or small impact may occur. Concurrents?
Oh, you skipped F, the proposed action may result in an increased erosion.
I'm sorry. The proposed action may result in increased erosion, whether from physical disturbance or vegetation removal. I put that as a moderate to large impact may occur because of the steep slopes and.
I concur.
And the last question again, then, the proposed action is or may be located within a coastal erosion hazard area.
Is that saying no or small impact?
It is. I would say no, too. Okay, so that would mean that question one, impact on land, would be a yes.
Okay.
Impact on geological features. The proposed action may result in the modification or destruction of or inhibit access to any unique or unusual landforms on the site. For example, cliffs, dunes, minerals, fossils, and caves. Anybody want to comment on that?
Oh, do we go through? Do we answer that first and then go on to the rest of them?
I would. Well, I I would say that is a no off the top.
Okay.
Any comment?
I'm good.
Good.
Okay, no. Impacts on surface water. The proposed action may affect one or more wetlands or other surface water bodies, for example, streams, rivers, ponds, or lakes. Now, we do know that obviously there are wetlands on this site. And the property itself fronts on the Hudson River. So my guess is, or likelihood, it's going to be a yes, but we'll go through the questions. A, the proposed action may create a new water body. Kevin, you want to verbally answer that or?
From what we've been told, it does not appear to be creating a new water body.
Anybody else?
Good.
Agree with Kevin? Thumbs up? Okay, no, or small impact. The B, the proposed action may result in an increase or decrease of over 10% or more than an 10-acre increase or decrease in the surface area of any body or water.
I'm saying no.
Anybody want to chime in or do you concur with Wayne? Okay.
I concur.
The proposed action may involve construction within or adjoining a freshwater or tidal wetland or in the beds or banks of any other water body. Matt, you want to take a shot at that one?
I think you read the wrong one, Sue. Yeah, you skipped one question, but while we're on it, but what would the wetlands be considered in something like this?
I would say, I mean, I'm thinking no, no to small, moderate, small impact on that one.
I think on that one, I would disagree. I would I would go with moderate to large.
What?
I mean, it's a may. I mean, moderate to large impact may occur. And it's a fairly large wetland, and obviously, the entire eastern border of this property is on the Hudson River. So there is potential.
Well, if well, then that would, if it's on the banks, I'm I'm reading on further here, the banks of of any other water body that then that would, you know, the banks would then make it a moderate to large then. Yeah. That's the only part. Okay, so it'd be a moderate then on that one.
Is that agreed?
Yes, Kevin.
I'm going to go back to C. I apologize. I'll have to put a ruler under these questions. The proposed action may involve dredging of more than 100 cubic yards of material from a wetland or water body. The action doesn't involve any dredging at all, so that is a no. Okay, then on to E. The proposed action may create turbidity in a water body, either from upland erosion runoff or by disturbing bottom sediments. Vince, you want to try that one?
I'd have to say no.
Matt?
Sue?
Yeah?
I would say that's a moderate.
Okay, Robert says a moderate. I I would tend to agree with my Robert on that one.
Because that, I mean, if we're building, if we're building roads and we have runoff, the question is, where is that runoff going, etc.?
Well.
Taking that with some with some runoff prevention materials, is that still, we're still creating that?
We're, if they're building roads, the road, the main road on North Street to the Empire Trail, are they talking about that area? I don't see any roads beyond that.
Well, you have the road, you have the new road going off of Lindsay Avenue coming down into the site as well.
Right.
But when the construction takes place, that all has the silt fencing and all of that in place.
Yes, but where's the runoff going? I mean, are there retention basins or is this eventually making its way back down to the lower areas?
I think I think in this case, moderate to large impact may occur is correct. The mitigating measures would be obviously to utilize best practice, best management practices in erosion control.
Correct.
And, you know, monitoring that and reporting that under all of the applicable laws and statutes and repairing it, you know, as needed.
So if we say that it may create turbidity, it's up to the applicant then to to respond to the moderate or large impact by saying we're going to have erosion mitigation.
It is up to you as the board, as the lead agency, then, to say that the mitigation would be, you know, obviously, they're they're working on a SWIP, which is something that John is reviewing, and that has a full erosion and sediment control plan incorporated within it. And that plan in and of itself has measures of where structures and and erosion control devices will be placed and how. And also, you know, how they'll be maintained and managed. And they'll be, you know, reported, anything that is, you know, disturbed or has been broken will get repaired and replaced as necessary.
Kevin here, if I may, write in the applicant's part one, page six, letter E. Will the proposed action disturb more than one acre or create stormwater runoff? They answer yes. So right in their statement, they're expecting to create runoff. So I agree, it should be a moderate to large, may moderate to large.
I agree then. I'm good.
Okay. Large thumbs up or?
I'm good.
Matt? Okay. Question F, the proposed action may include construction of one or more intakes for withdrawal of water from surface water. Well, that is a no. They will not be, they'll be using public water.
Good.
G, the proposed action may include construction of one or more outfalls for discharge of wastewater or surface water. I put that as a no or small. I mean, they're obviously going to be connecting to the city's wastewater treatment plant where the waste will be processed and then discharged. So I put that as a no. Yes, okay. The project action may cause soil erosion or otherwise create a source of stormwater discharge that may lead to siltation or other degradation of receiving water bodies. You want to take a stab at that one? Your thoughts?
Well, since we answered, you know, moderate to large impact on the turbidity on E, I mean, that would be a moderate to large impact there, too, right? Oh.
Wayne?
Said that. Am I on?
Yes.
We heard you.
I'm going to say moderate to large.
Kevin agrees.
Everybody else? Vince?
I agree.
Okay. I, the proposed action may affect the water quality of any water bodies within or downstream of the site of the proposed action.
Kylie, can you move the screen up a little bit?
Thank you.
I'll read the question again. It's I, the proposed action may affect the water quality of any water bodies within or downstream of the site of the proposed action. About Matt, you want to take a stab at that one?
Well, if it's going to do turbidity and everything up above, I'd say it would be a maybe a moderate.
I think a moderate.
Kevin, I agree.
I agree.
Okay.
I agree.
J, the proposed action may involve the application of pesticides or herbicides in or around any water body. I believe based on the question, the answers to from the applicant, that would be a no in that particular. Is there concurrents?
I'm there. I'm there.
Okay.
Kevin, agree.
The proposed action may require the construction of new or expansion of existing wastewater treatment facilities.
No. No.
That would be a no. I would agree with that. Okay. So number three ends up being a yes. Okay, number four, impact on groundwater. We can go through the questions. The A, the proposed action may require new water supply wells or create additional demand or supplies from existing water supply wells. That's a municipal system, so that is a no. Water supply demand from the proposed action may exceed safe and sustainable withdrawal capacity rate of the local supplier or aquifer. The city source is the municipal source and there is, we have gotten indication that there's adequate water capacity to provide the project. So that would be a no. The proposed action may allow or result in residential uses in areas without water and sewer service, but we know that is a no. The proposed action may include or require wastewater discharged to groundwater. And that being no. Proposed action may result in the construction of water supply wells in locations where groundwater is or is suspected to be contaminated. Well, there's, that is a no. The proposed action may require the bulk storage of petroleum or chemical products over groundwater or an aquifer. Well, that is a no. There is none proposed. The proposed action may involve the commercial application of pesticides within 100 feet of potable drinking water or irrigation sources. And I believe that is a no as well. So overall, they are utilizing the municipal water supply, which serves the project site and has the capacity to provide the needed amount of potable water. I would say the impact on groundwater is no. Moving along, impact on flooding. Question A, the proposed action may result in the development in a designated floodway. Well, they that they answered that question as no or small in their part one. I would concur that it would be no or small impact. However, the next two, the proposed action may result in the development within a 100-year floodplain or the proposed action may result in development within a 500-year floodplain. I would say they are both moderate to large impacts may occur because they are within both. Concur?
Yes. Kevin agrees.
Okay. The proposed action may result in or acquire modification of drainage patterns. Wayne, you want to take a stab at that one?
Is this for draining patterns from from the roadways and and parking lots? Is that what we're talking about here?
Yeah, or or just raw land drainage patterns.
I think it will require modification. I mean, then, well, it's I'm going to say moderate to large.
Anybody else?
No, I concur.
I concur.
I agree. Kevin agrees.
Next question, the proposed action may change floodwater flows that contribute to flooding.
I would say that's a no.
I would I would agree, no or small impact. Was that Robert?
Yes, yes.
I would agree they're not doing any elevation changes. That would, that would cause water to go in a different direction.
Is there a dam located on the site of the proposed action? Is the dam repair or upgrade? Well, we know that is a no. So overall, we did have two, three moderate to large, so impact on flooding would be a yes. Impacts on air. The proposed action may include a state-regulated air emissions source. We'll go through these questions. I believe overall this will be a no, but. We'll go through these questions, I believe overall this will be a no, but. A, if the proposed action requires federal or state air emission permits, the action may also emit one or more greenhouse gases at or above the following levels.
No.
I would say no, to all of them. Okay. Next question, the proposed action may generate 10 tons per year or more of any one designated hazardous air pollutant or 25 tons per year or more of any combination of such hazardous air pollutants.
That's a no.
The proposed action may require a state air registration or may produce an emission ra- rate of total contaminants that may exceed five pounds per hour or may include a heat source capable of producing more than 10 million BTUs per hour.
No.
No?
No.
The proposed action may reach 50% of any of the thresholds in A through C above.
No.
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 Proposed action may result in the combustion or thermal treatment of more than one tons of refuse per hour, no.
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 So overall, the impact on air is no. Impact on plants and animals. Question A, the proposed action may cause reduction in population or loss of individuals of any threatened or endangered species as listed by New York State or the federal government that use the site or are found on, over, or near the site. Now, you have received copies of Chasen's work that they did on wildlife.
They, they've determined that there's that the bats used some of the trees down there during times of the year, is that the one we're talking about?
Yes, so the impact on plant, impact on plants and animals. The Chasen companies completed a response to comments regarding USFW questions on the site. The response letter dated February 19th, 2021, prepared by Dennis D McDougall, CWB PWS was reviewed by staff and posted on the city website. Staff concurs with the findings that, and this is a quote directly from that report. Given the project sponsors' compliance with USFW's requirements for tree clearing for northern long-eared and Indiana bats, it is Chasen's opinion that this project can proceed without additional coordination per USFW guidance. It is further Chasen's opinion that the project meets the New York State DEC's guidelines for the protection of northern long-eared bats and no further consultation with the New York State DEC is required, end quote. So I would concur at staff level with that response and I would recommend that it get attached to this document by reference.
Okay, so does that indicate that there's a ma- large impact that may occur? Or does that satisfy a no there?
Well, it could be, it could be a moderate to large impact and yes, it is mitigated by following the guidelines.
So I would say it's a moderate to large, this is Wayne, but like you said, it's, it can be mitigated as per the letter you just read.
Chuck, any thoughts on that?
No, I agree.
Anybody else? Everybody concur?
I concur.
Okay. B, the proposed action may result in a reduction or degradation of any habitat used by any rare, threatened, or endangered species as listed by New York State or federal government.
Moderate.
Okay, Kevin?
I guess if we're still talking about the bat, then we're, then yes, moderate.
Okay, Matt?
Aside from the bat, was there anything else listed in the report?
There was Davis Sedge, I don't have the report sitting right in front of me, I just read that one section. There were some others, but.
Well, then I would go with a moderate.
Okay.
I go with a moderate too.
Okay.
I agree.
All right, so that is a moderate. C, the proposed action may cause reduction in population or loss of individuals of any species in special concern or conservation need as listed by New York State or the federal government that use the site or are found on, over, or near the site.
This is Wayne again, moderate, I'm going with a moderate.
I think I would go here with no or small impact because you look at the area overall and they are complying. I, I would, I would consider that they're small, but.
Well, I mean, they, again, they're, they're
Okay.
To remediate that, but does it still say that, I mean, answering the other, you know, A and B as, as moderate, does it almost force us to write a C as being a moderate too or no?
No. You're talking about population, you know, versus habitat versus other.
I mean, I'm just thinking.
I would agree with Sue, I mean, you know, we have a reduction where the road is, but I don't think it rises the level of reduction of the overall population.
Anybody else?
I agree with Robert's thought, Kevin, here.
Okay.
Matt does too.
I'll go, Wayne, I'll go with that as well.
Okay, all right.
I will.
The proposed action may result in reduction or degradation of any habitat used by any species or of special concern and conservation need as listed by New York State or the federal government.
Isn't that basically mirroring what B says too?
Well, one is rare and the other is any species of special concern or conservation need.
How did Chasen define the difference between those two? Did they address that?
Well, one is if, if the species is on the rare, threatened, or endangered list, it's already been
Right.
identified, okay. And this one is if it's of special concern or conservation, it hasn't quite risen to the level of being listed.
Right, so do we know of anything? At this point? All right, so I would say no in that case.
I agree.
No.
Agreed.
Yeah, Wayne is an agreement too.
Okay. The proposed action may diminish the capacity of a registered national natural landmark to support the biological community it was established to per, to protect.
Sounds like a no.
Yeah, no.
No.
Okay.
No.
All right. Proposed action may result in the removal of or groundwater disturbance in any portion of a designated significant natural community.
Wayne is a no.
No, Kevin, it's not that we're aware of.
Yeah, Chuck is a no.
Matt's a no.
Not that I'm aware of, I'm a no.
Okay. The proposed action may substantially interfere with nesting breeding, foraging, or overwintering habitat for the predominant species that occupy or use the project site.
Wayne is a no.
Chuck is a no.
Kevin's a no.
Matt's a no.
Rob's a no.
Okay. The proposed action requires the conversion of more than 10 acres of forest, grassland, or any other regionally or locally important habitat. I would say no.
I concur, no, Wayne is a no.
Chuck is a no.
And that's been confirmed, the new parking lots and, and roadway down from Lindsay Avenue is less than 10 acres.
The report, the part one says it's one acre.
Okay.
Being reduced.
Matt's no.
Kevin's a no.
Rob's a no.
Okay. The proposed action, commercial, industrial, or recreational projects only involves use of herbicides or pesticides.
Wayne is a no.
Chuck is a no.
Matt's no.
Okay, so because we did have some yeses, we're answering the overall impact on plants and animals as yes. Impact on agricultural resources. I don't think we need to read the questions, I believe we can answer that off the top of, of the bat as no.
I agree, Kevin.
Matt agrees.
Yes, I'm, I agree. Yes, I know.
Number nine, impact on aesthetic resources. The land use of the proposed action are obviously different from or are in sharp contrast to current land use patterns between the proposed project and a scenic or aesthetic resource. So we'll start with A. The proposed action may be visible from officially designated federal, state, or local scenic or aesthetic resource.
Well, that's gonna be, it's part of, well, the Empire State Trail, that's a designated aesthetic resource, right?
I think you could consider it one, yes. Also, across the river, you have the historic district on the office on Duchess County, so.
I'd say moderate to, to large.
Kevin says moderate due to the trail being there.
Wayne is a, is a moderate.
Matt's moderate.
Okay. The proposed action may result in the obstruction, elimination, or significant screening of one or more officially designated scenic views. I would say no or small myself to that.
Kevin, I say small, if anything, we're adding to views.
Wayne is a no or small.
That's a small, yeah. Small.
Okay, the proposed action may be visible from publicly accessible vantage points, seasonally. Or, and year-round, both, they're asking you for both situations.
Moderate to large, I would say, I mean, there's, there's a lot to, right?
From, this is Kevin, from the river, it's certainly going to be very visible, seasonally, at least kayakers and boaters. Whether it's year-round, I don't know about the winter time.
I agree, Wayne is, for both of them, right, year-round and seasonally.
I say yes for both.
Yes, for both as what?
Seasonal and year-round.
Yes, but are you, are you saying that it is no or small impact may occur or moderate to large impact?
Moderate to large.
Okay.
Kevin agrees.
Robert agrees. Matt agrees.
Okay. Situation or activity in which viewers are engaged while viewing the proposed action is routine travel by residents, including travel to and from work.
I'd have to say no on that.
Kevin says no.
Okay.
Wayne is a no.
And the second one is recreational or tourism-based activities.
Well, that, that would be a yes.
For moderate, yeah. I don't know, moderate.
Kevin agrees.
Okay, moderate. The proposed action may cause a diminishment of the public enjoyment and appreciation of the designated aesthetic resource.
Kevin, I'm gonna have to say moderate to large may occur.
I, I agree with Kevin, moderate.
Okay, Vince?
Yes, I agree.
That's moderate.
Wayne is a moderate.
Okay, moderate. There are similar projects visible within the following distance of the proposed project. Zero to half a mile, one and a half, one half to three miles, three to five miles, or five plus miles.
Wayne says no or small impact.
I would agree with that.
Kevin agrees.
Are there any other impacts that anyone would like to add in, in terms of aesthetic resources? Okay, so then with the yeses and moderate to large impact, that question would be a yes. Moving on, impact on historic and archaeological resources. The proposed action may occur in or adjacent to a historic or archaeological resource. Though, A, the proposed action may occur wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to any buildings, archaeological site, or district which is listed on the National or State Register of Historical Places or that has been determined by the Commissioner of the New York State Office of Parks, Rec, and Historic Preservation to be eligible listing on the State Register of Historic Places.
We have nothing. Do we show?
Have on it some, some features that are eligible, so I would say that would be a moderate to large impact.
But what features are, are on there for that?
The site, some of the structures, a silo, a couple of brick buildings.
Their part one statement also agrees with that. Page 13, letter F. Agrees, agrees that it would be moderate.
The quartz mansion is part of that, that view from there too?
Of quartz, absolutely, you'd have to drive by the quartz mansion to get to the Linsley parking lot.
Moderate to large impact, and I'm good with that.
B, the proposed action may occur wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to any area designated as sensitive for archaeological sites on the New York State Historic Preservation Office shipo archaeological site inventory.
Their statement says yes, this is Kevin.
I would concur, moderate.
Wayne is a moderate, yeah.
Chuck is a moderate.
Matt?
Moderate.
Hey, Robert?
Rob's a moderate.
Okay. The proposed action may occur wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to an archaeological site not included on the New York State Historic Preservation Inventory. That, I will advise on that one, that there has been a, there was an archaeological prospect at the top of Linsley Avenue where the parking lot is to be established. And it is recognized by shipo. So there is some mitigation that will be proposed so that that area will go undisturbed.
So that would, this is Wayne's, so that would fall under moderate to large then, right?
Yes, yep.
Well, that, but the question says not included in the shipo inventory.
Which?
Well, it's, it hasn't, yeah, well, it is, but, hmm, that's good. I still, I still would list it as a moderate to large.
Why don't we just say no on that in letter, in part D, just state yes and say per shipo inventory?
What, has other impacts?
Yeah, why don't we just say yes and then say per shipo inventory?
Okay.
That works for me, it's Matt.
But say no on the other one?
Say no and bring it down to part D and say per shipo inventory, proposed action occurs within a archaeology, contiguous to an archaeological site, per shipo.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
So that would mean the overall answer to the impact on historic and archaeological resources is a yes for item number 10. Item number 11, impact on open space and recreation. The proposed action may result, oh, I'm sorry, let's keep going on that because I missed the E. If any of the above, A to D, are answered moderate to large, impact may occur. Continue with the following questions to help support conclusions in part three. Um, number one, the proposed action may result in the destruction or alteration of all or part of the site or property.
That's a no.
I would say no on that too.
No.
No.
No, okay.
Kevin agrees.
Number two, the proposed action may result in the alteration of the property's setting or integrity. I would say no on that one.
No.
Kevin agrees, no.
No.
Matt?
No.
Okay. Number three, the proposed action may result in the introduction of visual elements which are out of character with the site or property and may, or may alter its setting.
As a no.
Everybody else?
Matt agrees.
Okay. So then again, that stays with a no. We move on to the impact on open space and recreation. The proposed action may result in a loss of recreational opportunities or a reduction of an open space resource as designated in any adopted municipal open space plan. Question number one, the, or A, the proposed action may result in impairment of natural functions or ecosystem services provided by an undeveloped area, including but not limited to stormwater storage, nutrient cycling, and wildlife habitat. Anyone? Wayne?
I'm trying to make one here, hold on.
Sue, this is Joe Ariel. I wonder if I might just be heard on this. The, the open space question in 11 talks about, you know, the general question before you even get to these subsections. Talks about as designated in any adopted municipal open space plan. Wouldn't that just be, isn't that just a no? I mean, this is, I don't think this.
There is an adopted open municipal open space plan.
You know, I know, but it. But is this, is this site identified within that adopted plan?
I believe portion of it is. Guys keep discussing, I'll look for it.
I believe that was mentioned in one of the letters that we received.
Yeah, I mean, look, I, I'm not, we can go through the questions. It's that, you know, the individual questions will still get, I think. Yeah, there's.
I think it's a yes.
This is Matt. My take on this, because this, that question was the loss of recreational opportunities or open space resources, and we're just adding to this.
Well, that's gonna depend, this is Kevin, that's gonna depend on that waterfront access plan.
But.
That we're very much in.
Yes.
But aren't we on 11A? I mean, I'm reading 11A. I'm thinking this is a no.
Stormwater, storage, nutrient, recycling, wildlife habitat. I would agree with Rob, this one is a no. This is.
It is a no.
Now, B, B says the proposed action may result in the loss of current or future recreational resource.
This is Kevin, I'd have to go with moderate there.
Duck, any thoughts on that one?
Well, I'd have this, I agree with the moderate.
I would agree.
No, no, or, or small impact on A and moderate on B?
Yeah, we're, we're done with A. A was a no. I think we're on B, and I would say moderate.
Say moderate, this is Wayne.
He should be moderate.
Okay, so it looks like moderate. Okay.
And then while Sue keeps looking at that, that C says the proposed action may eliminate open space or recreational resources in an area with few such resources. I would think that that might be a no.
Matt agrees.
Is that because we're converting from a, a former industrial site, is that why?
Yeah, and looking at the other public resources around it, and we're only looking at the small area where the, um, the road leading off of Lindsay Avenue, and we're also looking at the small area where we have uh, the new cabins and existing, uh, you know, uh, building and bathrooms. I mean, we're, we're not looking at the when I read this question, I'm not looking at the entire site, I'm looking at what's actually being constructed right now.
This is Kevin, I agree with Rob.
Right, I'm good with that. C would be, this is Wayne, no or small impact of it.
Do you agree with that, Sue?
I, I'm looking at, I'm sorry, looking for something online right now. We were on.
We were on, we were on 11C, and we were thinking that was a no.
And she's already checked that, so, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So then we're at D, the proposed action may result in the loss of an area now used informally by the community as an open space resource. Again, I would say that as a no, because we know the property's been secured over the past few years.
Thankfully, this is Kevin, I agree. With no.
No.
No, Wayne is no.
Matt's no.
So Sue, do you want us to go on to 12, or do you want us to give you a moment?
Yeah, I'm looking at the open space vision map, um, and this area does show conservation areas and potential future park areas. Uh, and urban forest there. It is recognized in the open space plan.
Does anyone want to add to section A, any other impacts?
I would, I would put in there with the other impacts, I would just make a notation that public access plan is being, you know, developed and will be required to get approval, and the applicant will have to comply.
I agree with that.
I agree with that.
Kevin, I. Matt agrees.
This is Joe Ariel, I, I I would ask that, that some care be exercised in terms of the, mentioning that a note, that an access plan is being considered, I think is fine, it's true. The, setting it up as a sort of a, at, at this point in this part of the process with secret review as a prerequisite, I think is, is, I think we're, we're still engaged in the, in sort of with, with the law department on that subject and, and with your department, Sue, and the planning commission, I would just I, I I, I don't know, I, I I'll just put that comment on the record, I think. I think saying that the access plan is being developed and reviewed. I, I would ask that that be considered sufficient.
Anybody else want to comment on that? Thoughts, Robert? Wayne?
This is Wayne. The, the, the fact that they are developing a public access plan or, um, probably does answer some of the moderate to large impacts that were, you know, A through D, so maybe we should not include that on E. I mean, it, I, I, I agree with Joe then that, um, other impacts, you know, I, I think an open, open space plan is not an impact, it's, it's, it's a it's an answer to the rest of, of the A, B, A through D. Anybody else on that?
I don't know. Well, I think, I think, Wayne, I think it needs to be noted, I mean, the, the, the question in 11 is the proposed action may result in the loss of recreational opportunities or reduction of open space resources without a complete public access plan. This question is hard to answer. So it is pending because the applicant is working with the city on this.
But isn't it? It, it, I, I thought in, in an answer to an earlier question. Actually, this is, this is a I think this commission in, in the discussion this evening has already said that in fact, what's happening is access is being improved, like one way or another, this site's being opened up. I, I, I just think it's a, I think it's a conclusion, to, to put it plainly, I think it's almost like a conclusion of law here that I, uh, that I just think is still a moving target, and, and as the chair said, I, I, we we have submitted as part of our mitigation proposal, this plan and will continue to do so. I just don't know that it requires a separate, uh, I mean, I think it's arguable that it's not even part of the site plan application, and, but it is something that we're proposing as part of a mitigation on this issue, and I am just not sure that it warrants a separate.
And I, I think that's exactly the reason, my, my opinion is why it should be recognized. Um, because it is.
I'm not saying it shouldn't be recognized, I, I, what what I'm other, as other impact, I mean, that, that's myself, this is Wayne, I I, I think that the open space plan that is being, has been submitted um, is, like I said, is the result of answering some of these other sections here as moderate to large impact. I don't, I, I, you know, I don't think it's a, it's a, it should be identified as other impact.
I, I don't know, Wayne, I just, I, I I disagree because I think by having it as a moderate, then the applicant's gonna come back and, uh, mitigate that factor through their open space plan, which is still technically still being developed. Is what I'm hearing tonight.
Well, what, what I'll say is what's written there right now in E, that what you all see, what we all see on the screen right now, public access plan is being developed and reviewed. That, I'm okay with that. It, it was the, it, it I'm okay with that. It, it's, it, it was the second half of, of what was initially written, I can't remember exactly what it is, but what's written there right now, if, uh, we're, is okay with us.
What I, what I had written originally was needs approval. And then you had mentioned.
Well, isn't that what we're discussing next planning board meeting?
So I guess it's depends on how yeah, depends on, I guess, how you want the wording.
Right, it is what we're discussing, but again, we're discussing that in the context of, for instance, a site plan approval resolution and not you know, this form.
The development of a public access plan is part of the mitigation of some of the moderate to large impacts, I think, not only in this particular question, but maybe in some of the others as well.
All right, I'm comfortable with E, I'm a yes.
On the what, Rob?
The way it's written now, I'm comfortable with E.
With being developed and reviewed without the needs to approval section?
Well, it needs the approval, because that's what we're talking about next meeting. And then that's when the mitigating factors come in from the developer.
How that's subject to approval during site plan review?
That's fine, that's what we're doing.
Okay. I guess, yeah, I mean, I guess I, look, I, I would just say that that's true as anything that gets incorporated into site plan approval and everything that follows from this secret determination, so it just, it seems, to be honest, somewhat inappropriate to single, yeah, redundant and, and singling this issue out. Everything that we propose off of the secret determination, and that becomes part of the ultimate site plan approval is it, it is of course subject to the approval of the planning board, and I, 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 I'm just not sure.
Look, I, I'll, I'll concede to Joe, yes, as part of the site plan approval, so if they don't want in the secret document, I'm okay with it. But I think through this discussion, it's clear that this is going to be an issue at the next planning board meeting that has to be flushed out.
I think it's.
That's fair.
As well, though, I, I honestly do, I feel that it's important that, you know, um, through all the public comment we've received on this project, that we're talking about open space and recreation. The impact on open space and recreation, I think, you know, you have to go beyond looking at we have an already adopted open space plan, um, but we are considering a public access plan, and I think it's, it's a critical component. Um, and it's part of answering this question, um.
Well, I'm, sure, I mean, that's, it, okay, so E, the way it appears there is, okay, we can move on from that.
So being E in that respect, we gotta check off a box in the other, on the other side there then.
Well, is everyone comfortable with the current wording here?
But, but Kevin McMath, how is it that, that, that we're developing one side of, proposing to develop one side and adaptably reuse of several structures on one side of North Street? We actually moved cabins from the west side of North Street to the east side of North Street. And how is it that this action is reducing a recreational resource when there's about, I don't know, 60 acres of land, or, or 55 acres of land on the west side of North Street? That's open. How, how is the action that we're, we're actually doing, reducing that? I'm, I'm, I'm not following this at all. I understand the desire to have the, the access agreement, a, a public access plan, I get that, but this, this action which is to, which is to add two small bathrooms and, and move cabins from the west side of the road to the east side is not decreasing any open space, folks. So I don't, I don't even know how it's decreasing the potential for open space. I understand how the master plan, that that concept decreases the potential for open space, but this plan doesn't decrease any potential for open space. It actually increased potential, because we moved cabins from the west side to the east side. So I'm, I'm not following.
But it's not just open space, it's also recreational opportunities.
And what, and what recreational opportunities were reduced?
Those are the, those are the areas on the east side that affect the waterfront and the Hudson River.
Well, so we agree that there needs to be. We're not, we're not reducing anything.
That's, that's part, yeah, look, this is gonna be part of the discussion next month, so, I mean, I, I, I think at this point on the secret, we're, we're, we're going off track here, so.
I would agree with that, I, I, I think that, the point that I'm trying to make is that I'm not, I, I think it's an artificial um, it's an artificial statement in the context of the secret review of this action, whether or not it becomes, well, not whether or not. It is clearly an issue that's on the table for the larger discussion of conditions to approval, et cetera, and we're engaged in that dialogue, but I just, you know, as Kevin said, I just don't think I think, like, we didn't do this with respect to any other impact on which we're gonna have mitigation. You know, we didn't, we didn't add a special sentence that said, and this is gonna have to, I, I just think it's not I don't know, I, I, look, I've made the point, I, I mean, the point is on the record, I I don't know, I I look, I've made the point, I I mean, the point is on the record, I I. I would argue that it's superfluous and and I also think it's a, it's a legally significant conclusion that is just not. I I'm just not sure that it's entirely uh appropriate in this secret context and I and and I and I don't think it helps. Um, look, you're not going to approve this site plan and special permit if you're not happy. So so nothing about that changes if you don't put anything in E.
Way off track, I think we're, you know, we're we're trying to value. On, you know, on the environment and we're going through this and the impact is on open space and recreation. It clearly, you know, it there's a clear connection between a public access plan and open space and recreation, and I think that.
But in what respects too, has anybody identified a diminished access?
While we are not, you know, while while the the language of the text. Only references an open space plan, I don't think that that closes the door on any other. Potential plans that a community may be considering, and in this part, in this particular case, you have. A plan that we're we're looking at, and I think that there's no problem with recognizing that fact in this portion of the. Statement at all.
I I understand that and I'm not really arguing against the more expansive view of open space and recreation here. What I'm saying is to echo what Kevin said as well. In what respect has anybody identified anything about this proposed action which would reduce? Which would impair access. What you guys are talking about is is adding and improving access. And that's clearly on the table, it's part of the discussion in this approval process. But I just, as an impact analysis in this.
It does say may result in the loss of recreational community reductions, so. I think, you know, the potential is there for recreational opportunities.
No, but you just, but that's a different thing.
The public access, so the.
You said may reduce. You said may reduce, which is what the form is talking about, and then you followed that by saying, I think there's an opportunity to increase. Those are two different.
Yeah, but that, right, so by not providing it, okay, but simply, you know, if it if it's not provided, yes. We have reduced an opportunity, we have lost an opportunity, so what I'm saying is that the public access plan. Provides for that, it it's the mitigation, it is, it is the answer to the the loss, the potential loss.
And also in question B.
We're not going to lose, we're going to gain.
It does talk about future, the potential for future recreational resource. So that's not necessarily resource that's current. But has the potential in the future under section B. And I think.
Yeah, which which you've already identified.
Right.
I I I what, okay, it's it's enough, I I made the record, I think it's.
Okay.
I think it's dangerous territory, but but go ahead, that's fine.
So what do other board members feel on this? We have E, and at this point, we either have to pick moderate or no.
Matt goes for moderate.
Kevin's moderate.
Chuck's moderate.
Rob's moderate.
Yeah, moderate on that, too. I I I I. My question why we're doing. That verbiage has another impact, but I will, I'll go with the moderate on that.
Okay.
And that's agreement on the wording that's currently there.
Yeah.
Question twelve, impact on critical environmental areas. I would say that just right off the bat, we could answer that question, no, there is no CEAs on this. Property within or adjacent. Moving right along, impact on transportation. The proposed action may result in a change to existing transportation systems. Question A, projected traffic increase may exceed the capacity of the existing road network.
I say yes, moderate.
It may exceed, right, we're not.
Yes, but.
There, it may.
Kevin, I agree with Chuck.
Moderate.
Matt agrees.
Okay. B, the proposed action may result in the construction of paved parking area for five hundred or more vehicles.
They're not proposing a paved air, are they, this is.
That's a no or small.
I know, Wayne is a no or small impact.
Kevin agrees.
Just to just as in fact, going back to item number, item A. You know, we had a, we had a a prior site plan that contemplated uh events for up to thirty-five hundred people. What this amendment does is it does it a daytime seasonal restaurant. And and by the way, the cabins you've already approved. So um. I I don't know, I don't know how that increase is going to trigger, I I I do understand the thirty-five hundred people. But I don't understand how this particular uh proposed action, but that was, I just wanted to say that.
Any comment on that?
I let's move on.
Okay. So then C, the proposed action will degrade existing transit access.
That's a no.
Yeah.
Oh, wait, oh.
Rob's a no.
Kevin's a no.
Matt's a no.
Okay. The proposed action will degrade existing pedestrian or bicycle accommodation.
Like it is a no.
Rob's a no.
That's a no.
Kevin's no.
Doc's a no.
Okay, E, the proposed action may alter the present pattern of movement of people or goods.
Wayne is a no.
Rob's a no.
Matt to now.
Kevin to now.
Okay, any other impacts? I would add on this, just as a reference, again, Chason did a traffic analysis on Linsley Avenue. At the request of this board. Um, and they reviewed the intersection of Linsley and Delaware. Um, and the existing traffic patterns, and they came up with no impact. Finding, and I would prefer with that, so we just by reference, attach their document to this. Final document.
I would agree.
Kevin agrees.
Matt agrees.
Okay. So then the transportation pack becomes a yes, just because of the first question. Impact on energy, the proposed action may cause an increase in the form of any or in the use of any form of energy. So A, the proposed action will require new or upgrade to existing substation. No? Anybody?
Kevin agrees.
Okay, the proposed action will require the creation or extension of an energy transmission or supply system to serve more than fifty. Single or two-family residents or serve a commercial or industrial use. No?
No.
Kevin agrees.
Okay, everybody good? The proposed action may utilize more than two thousand five hundred megawatt per hours. Uh, per year of electricity.
Wayne's a no.
Nope.
Chuck's a no.
Matt. Rob.
Kevin's no.
The proposed action may involve heating or cooling of more than one hundred thousand square feet of building area when completed, that is a no.
Agreed.
I would say then the overall impact on energy is no. Number fifteen, the impact of noise, odor, and light. The proposed action may result in an increase in noise, odors, and or outdoor lighting. Question A, the proposed action may produce sound above noise levels established by local regulation.
That's a no.
Uh, Wayne's a no.
Okay.
Doc's a no.
Kevin agrees, no.
Okay.
That's a no.
The proposed action may result in blasting within fifteen hundred feet of any residence, hospital, school, licensed daycare center, or nursing home. They're not blast, so that's a no.
Rob's a no.
Chuck's a no.
Kevin's a no.
Hey, the proposed action may result in routine odors for more than one hour per day.
Wayne's a no.
Chuck's a no.
Just a question on that was, there was some discussion early about fireplace, wood burning fireplaces, stoves. Or um fire pits. Is any of that a can fit there?
There are, yeah, there are three um open fire pits. On the project site being proposed.
I personally don't have a problem. But.
I think that's a small impact, don't you? It says no or small impact.
I can go with that, thank you.
Okay. The proposed action may result in light shining onto adjoining properties.
No.
What? Oh.
I I say no.
Rob's a no.
Kevin's.
That's a no.
Okay. The proposed action may result in lighting creating sky glow brighter than existing area condition.
Wayne's a no.
Kevin's a small impact.
Okay. Any other? Or impacts that the board might think of?
No.
Okay, that being said, the impact on noise, odor, and light is no. Okay, impact on human health. The proposed action may have an impact on human health from exposure to new or existing sources of contaminants. A, the proposed action is located within fifteen hundred feet of a school, hospital, licensed daycare center, group home, nursing home, or retirement community.
No.
No.
The site of the proposed action is currently undergoing remediation.
No.
Everybody else, I heard one, no.
No.
Okay, there is a completed emergency spill remediation or completed environmental site remediation on or adjacent to the site of the proposed. Action.
No.
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 Site of the action is subject to an institutional control limiting the use of the property, easement or deed restriction.
No.
No.
Small to moderate, um there there is Central Hudson, easements running through. So. Uh, E, the proposed action may affect institutional control measures that were put in place to ensure that the site remains protective of the environment and human health.
No.
No.
We're aware, Kevin, no.
Okay.
No.
F, the proposed action has adequate control measures in place to ensure that future generation treatment and or disposal of hazardous waste. Will be protective of the environment and human health.
I said no.
No.
No, Kevin?
That's no.
Okay, no. Gee, the proposed action involves construction or modification of a solid waste management.
Oh.
No.
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 Yeah, the proposed action may result in the unearthing of solid or hazardous waste.
Uh, no.
Everybody a no on that one?
No.
There's more aware of.
Yeah, the proposed action may result in an increase in the rate of disposal or processing of solid waste.
No.
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 Post-action may result in excavation or other disturbance within two thousand feet of a site for the disposal of solid or hazardous waste.
No.
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 The proposed action may result in the mid, mid, oh, I'm sorry, the proposed action may result in the migration of explosive gases from a landfill site. To adjacent off-site structures.
No.
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 Post-action may result in the release of contaminated leachate from the project site.
No.
No.
All right, so overall, then the answer to impact on human health is no. Number seventeen, consistency with community plans. The proposed action is not consistent with adopted land lands. Question A, the proposed actions land use components may be different from or in sharp contrast to. Current surrounding.
I would say no or small impact, which is Wayne.
No. That agrees, no.
Kevin agrees, no. Or low.
No, for Rob.
Okay. B, the proposed action will cause the permanent population of the city town or village in which the project is located to grow by more than five percent.
No.
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 The proposed action is inconsistent with local land use plans or zoning regulations.
No, Wayne is no.
Matt's no.
Kevin's no.
Okay, no. The proposed action is inconsistent with any county plan or other regional land.
Wayne is a no.
Matt's a no.
Kevin, no.
Okay, we got knows, all right. E, the proposed action may cause a change in the density of development that is not supported by existing infrastructure or is distant from existing. Infrastructure.
No.
Kevin's no.
No.
Okay. F, the proposed action is located in an area characterized by low density development that will require new or expanded public infrastructure.
No.
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 Okay.
No.
No. The proposed action may induce secondary development impacts, for example, residential or commercial development. Included in the proposed action.
No.
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 I would say it's a small impact may occur, but it it's a positive impact, I mean, people are trying. Want to establish a business or even reside, so.
I mean, when I say no, it's just to shorten the whole no or small impact, that's when I say no.
Okay, any other? Potential impacts from the board members?
No.
No.
So then overall, the consistency with community plan or not consistent with adopted would be no. Moving on to eighteen. Consistency with community character, the proposed action is inconsistent with the existing community character. First question, the proposed action may replace or eliminate existing facilities, structures, or areas of historic importance to the community.
No, Rob.
Matt's no.
Kevin, no.
Chuck, no.
Wayne?
No, I said, I said no, I'm sorry, so.
Okay. The proposed action may create a demand for additional community services, for example, school, fire, or police.
No, Rob.
Oh, impact, I'm saying.
Kevin, low.
No.
Okay.
No.
The proposed action may displace affordable or low-income housing in an area where there is a shortage of such housing.
No.
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 Those actually. Or enjoyment of officially recognized or designated public resources.
I would go no on this, that's Matt.
Okay.
Yeah, no. No.
Okay.
I'll take.
That'll take us back to where, where we were discussing the uh access and all that for the trailer.
I don't think this is gonna.
Kevin, I, no, it's not, I don't think it's gonna interfere sooner, I think by the time we're done, it's done, it's gonna enhance, so I don't think interfere.
Well, okay, I, I agree.
Everybody good? Okay. The proposed action is inconsistent with the predominant architectural scale and character.
No.
No.
Kevin.
The proposed action is inconsistent with the character of the existing natural landscape.
No, to small impact.
Boy. No.
Kevin, no.
Chuck, no.
Any other impacts that you can think of or would like to put out there? Okay?
No.
Hearing none, then that would make the consistency with community character um a no on the overall. Okay. Moving on to part three. Kyla, do you wanna put the part three page up? I'll give everybody a minute just to read through this portion very quickly before we move on. I'll kind of take notes and type. Everybody had a chance to read it?
Yes.
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 So we go back to part two from the beginning. And every question in that part two where your impact was identified as potentially moderate to large or where there is a need to explain why a particular, only another proposed action will not or may result in a significant adverse environmental impact we need to um respond to. Okay, so start.
Thinking, should I pull up uh part two and, and show that instead of showing?
Yeah, that would probably be helpful, yes.
And then we will kind of write it in as, as we go.
Right, I'll, I'll type in and take notes.
We have DoorDash. Want to do DoorDash?
Yeah, I think we should. It's like eight o'clock.
Okay, so Kyla has the part two up on the screen with how we've answered the questions. So, impact on land. We answered it as a yes. We had a couple of moderate to large impacts. The proposed action may involve construction on slopes of fifteen percent or greater. And the proposed action may result in the increased erosion, whether from physical disturbance or vegetation removal, including from treatment by herbicides. Um as answered, moderate to large impact may occur. Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
This is Wayne, I think that um the only thing that jumps out at me here is the, with the, the, uh, section F. I mean, these, and, and the rest of the, of the sections too, where we answered moderate, these things could be taken care of with, with uh with uh construction uh mitigation techniques. I, I think that it, it's not gonna have a significant impact on the environment.
Well, I, I did write something quickly up earlier. I'll read it to you. I said, the project involves the construction of an access roadway extending from the upper end of Linsley Avenue through the site and connecting to North North Street. This roadway has been designed by the engineers with some curvatures and cut fill sections to address the steep slopes with minimal disturbance. In addition, the roadway profiles, cross-sections, and the stormwater drainage are all under the review of the city engineer to avoid erosion and contain runoff in measurable quantities. Stormwater improvements are indicated in the SWIP. And the SWIP has been presented to the city engineer. Final sign-off of all site engineering elements is required of the city engineer. The project is designed in multiple phases of development and will also incorporate a variety of uses going forward. The draft master plan has been provided to assist with the evaluation of the project sponsor's vision. Certain key features will require regular reviews to assure that the impacts are not increased or are being mitigated appropriately. Due to the project size and the scope of construction, there is potential for erosion sediments to reach out to the Hudson River and also to on- and off-site wetlands. The city engineer is reviewing all of the construction and requiring sufficient erosion control measures and types to be employed as best management practices throughout the disturbed areas. The final SWIP will need assigned, you need to be signed off by the city engineer. That was my.
That sums it up.
Good.
It does.
Anybody other thoughts?
Oh, I think that covers it. I agree.
Okay. Um, the next one that we had was impact on surface water. We had a couple of questions there that were answered moderate to large impact. The proposed action may involve construction within or adjoining a freshwater or tidal wetland or in the bed or banks of any other water body was one where it's moderate to large potential. The proposed action may create turbidity in a water body either from upland erosion runoff or by disturbing bottom sediments. The proposed action may cause soil erosion or otherwise create a source of stormwater discharge that may lead to siltation or other degradation of receiving water bodies. The proposed action may affect the water quality of any water bodies within or downstream of the site of their proposed action. Any thoughts?
Does, this is Wayne, does your um your, your comments on impact on land, doesn't it basically cover this area as well on the surface water?
To, to an extent, I would say yes. I did write something, which I will read. But I wanna know if the board members have any other comments first.
The key word is mitigation during any construction phases.
Mm-hmm.
As long as the construction plans address this, I think we're good.
With common practice.
Yeah, that was, that's the word I was looking for there, common practice.
Hawk, any thoughts?
No.
Vince?
No.
Robert? Robert?
What? So.
Okay, um, I did draft something. Um, the project site is bound on the east by the Hudson River, which is classified down priority organics for fish consumption. Under the current proposal, there is no construction proposed immediately adjacent to the embankments that would create a disturbance impacting the quality of water. Appropriate erosion control measures will be installed, for example, silt fencing and hay bales under the supervision and guidance of the project engineers. All features will be closely monitored and reporting. Record-keeping repairs will be kept in accordance with applicable laws and regulations. Regulated wetlands will be treated with the same precautionary measures as the Hudson River. The city engineer will sign off on all best management practices that are to be utilized. Potential turbidity will be captured in a series of proposed control measures and to reduce the speeds runoff and keep water controlled. All wastewater will be collected and transferred to the existing municipal system for treatment and eventual release at appropriate points. The process is monitored by the city twenty-four seven. The project will create approximately four point five acres of impervious surfaces. Point sources of drainage will primarily be in the form of drainage swales, ditches, and piping that will be employed using stormwater management practices as outlined by New York State guidelines and other local regulations. Receiving waters will be protected. There are no anticipated impacts to downstream water bodies as a result of any erosion on site.
What Sue said.
That was good.
That was good.
You nailed it, Sue. I agree.
Okay.
It'll put us out of, out of our jobs here.
Um, moving along, impact on groundwater was no. The next one would be impact on flooding. Okay, we had a couple moderate to large impacts checked off there. Obviously, the proposed action may result in development within a one-hundred-year floodplain. Proposed action may result in the development within a five-hundred-year floodplain. The proposed action may result in or require modification of existing drainage patterns. And those were the moderate to large impacts. Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
This Wayne, the, the type of development that, that they're doing there in, in those floodplains that have been identified have already passed muster for what is allowed in those floodplains. And, and they're, they're actually redeveloping existing structures there too. So although we've answered moderate to large impact, I think that the type of construction going on there meets, you know, meets the guidelines applicable to those types of areas.
Mm-hmm.
I would agree with Wayne.
Okay.
Kevin, I.
That agrees too.
I agree.
Okay, I did draft something. The project site is elements proposed in both the one-hundred year and five-hundred year floodplain. The design of all structures has been accomplished in such a manner as to protect the infrastructure with minimal disturbance and severe flooding events. Pre-existing structures will remain in most um, most newer buildings are so constructed that they are elevated and kept back away from the river edge and also out of any delineated white wetland. Minor structures located closer to the water are movable and can be reset. There's no new construction, which would cause flooding on or off-site. So I will add to that Wayne's statement. Anybody else?
Kevin, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Matt, I'm good.
Um, okay, impacts on air was no. Impact on plants and animals. So this was where we had the proposed action may cause reduction in population or loss of individuals of any threatened or endangered species as listed by New York State or the federal government that use the site or are found on, over, or near the site. Proposed action may result in the reduction or degradation of any habitat used by any rare, threatened, or endangered species as listed in New, by New York State or the federal government. Those were your moderate to large impacts on that question.
This is Wayne. The, the concern was the uh the uh, the in, the bat, the bats there, and um, I think that there have been uh prescribed tree-cutting uh regulations that, that will, that will mitigate those, those types of losses there. So I think that those things are taken care of.
Right, this is where I had read before the um Chasing Company referenced at um their response to the comments regarding the United States Fish and Wildlife questions that we had on the site. Um, so I would incorporate that statement with their um opinion that is in that report um basically saying that they meet the guidelines for the protection, provided they follow them and that they, and they've committed to doing that and that there's no further consultation.
This is, I agree.
Anybody else?
I agree.
I agree.
You're awful quiet now. I hope you still there. Okay, so impact on agriculture was no. Impact on aesthetic resources. We had a couple, actually quite a few there um that were um moderate to large impacts. We had the proposed action may be visible from an officially designated federal, state, or local scenic or aesthetic resource. The proposed action may be visible from publicly accessible vantage points, both seasonally and year-round. The situation or activity in which viewers are engaged while viewing the proposed action, we had recreational or tourism-based activities as a moderate to large impact. Any thoughts?
This is Wayne. I think that even though we've identified moderate, moderate to large impacts on, on some of these questions here. I mean, that, we had, we had to answer it that way because of the places that they're being visible from, you know, I, 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 I don't think that what is being proposed, like, will necessarily um cause uh harm to those particular vantage points myself. But we did have to answer those, those questions as moderate to large impact may occur. I just don't think that this will um, will, will take place, will, will, that, I don't think it was, it's gonna happen that way, myself.
I think you can think about the design that has been incorporated into the individual new construction of the cabin units. Um, also um updating and renovating some of the existing structures to clean them up and adaptively reuse them.
That's.
Good.
Yes.
Um, locating most of the cabins sort of off the immediate water's edge and leaving, you know, more open areas there, I think is part of this mitigation on this as well. Um, as Kevin McManus had alluded to before, the cabins removed from the upper portion of a site, of the site to the lower portion. So the upper reaches, which are visible from far distances across the river, as an example, are not really and truly impacted to of, of, an extent that I think um need any more mitigation.
This is Kevin. I don't feel any of it will be obtrusive in any way by the time they're done based on what they've already done there with the cabins.
Okay.
All right.
Thoughts?
This is Matt, I'm in agreement.
Okay, Vince, any thoughts?
No, I'm in agreement.
Robert, any thoughts? Are you there?
I agree. I hear.
You're a little bit, we are still listening, Robert. Okay.
I, Chuck, I agree.
Okay, all right, so we'll move on. I will create the response based on that. Um impact on historic and archaeological resources. We did have um, the proposed action may occur wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to any buildings archaeological site or district, which is listed on the National State Register of Historic Places or that has been determined by the Commissioner of the New York State Office of Parks, Rec, and Historic Preservation to be eligible for listing on the State Register of Historic Places. The proposed action may occur wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to an area designated as sensitive for archaeological sites on the New York State Preservation Office shipboat archaeological site inventory. And then we also um had as an other impact, the archaeological. had as an other impact, the archaeological site per the SHPO inventory. However, we did answer the additional questions, all as no to small, moderate, no to small, moderate, moderate impact rather. So I did write something up for this one and I'll read it to you. The new parking area proposed for the dead end off Linsley Avenue is located in an area that has received archaeological attention under previous project reviews for a different end user. The site identified as USN number 114, 11140.1248 Diamond Site Number One is noted in the statewide CRIS program. The New York State Office of Parks, Rec, and Historic Preservation, SHPO, has written, has prior written reports of potential archaeological significance, but no determination has been made. Justin DeRigilio, President of Park and Archaeological Associates, was contacted to review past documentation and offer mitigation to avoid disturbance to the site from any new enhancements. An acceptable standard means of protection, a six to 12 inch layer of crushed stone can be installed on top of a demarcation fabric set on existing grade, and this would adequately protect any subsurface archaeological resources in the ground below. No cutting of soil will be performed. Mr. DeRigilio will prepare a recommendation writing, which will be reviewed by staff. When staff is satisfied, the mitigation measures proposed will be mandated. The applicant has stated that they are more than happy to comply with that does design criteria. So that more or less deals with the archaeological end of things, um, in terms of it's the impact to the historic, the adjacent historic properties. You have Quartz Mansion, which is on the National Register, also owned by the same individual that owns this project site. Um, I don't know that the, um, introduction of the traffic on Linsley to the parking area is going to have a tremendous impact. That's my personal opinion. I don't know about the board. Um, I also don't think that the existing, um, historic resources on the project site are impacted negatively by this project.
So this is Wayne, I agree with that. I, 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 as I said in the previous section, uh, we were, you know, we had to check these off as moderate to large impact, but I think that, um, how the site is being developed um, really lessens that impact that that will have on the, on those particular, uh, historic sites.
This is Kevin, I agree with Wayne's thoughts.
Rob concurs with Sue.
Okay.
So does Matt.
Okay. So let's move on to the next one. Impact on open space and recreation. Uh, this was the one that we had quite a bit of discussion on. We had two moderate to large impacts may occur. One is the proposed action may result in the loss of a current or future recreational resources. And the other was the other impact that we added in, which Kyla wrote, as public access plan is being developed and reviewed for approval during the site plan review.
So this is Wayne. I think that how we, uh, I know this was a, a lot of discussion on this, um, this particular section, but I think that how E, the other impact has been, um, has been illustrated there, takes care of this particular section. Um, the applicants have submitted a, um, a plan for public access that is going to be reviewed by this board at the, you know, starting in the April meeting. And I, you know, having said that, I think that that, that satisfies, uh, the moderate to large impact that may occur with this particular section.
Okay. Anybody else?
I just want to add something to the wording here. I just, I'd like to add a site plan slash special permit, just because there are two uh, reviews going on, if no one minds that.
Okay with that.
Anybody else?
This Kevin, I feel that the developer is going to, uh, ultimately come up with a plan that we will, uh, find more than acceptable.
I'm in agreement with that.
Okay. So the next possible impact is on transportation. And the one that was checked moderate to large impact would be the project traffic increase may exceed the capacity of the existing roadway network.
Sue, this is Wayne. Can you reference that, the traffic assessment, um, that you, the staff was, uh, in receipt, that we were in receipt of?
Yes, I actually did. And I had written up a, um, a short paragraph for this one. I will read it to you. The Chasing Companies completed a traffic evaluation as requested by the Planning Board for Linsley Avenue connection to the project site. The report dated February 16th, 2021, P E P T O E, was referred to the city engineer, reviewed by staff and posted on the city website. No comments have been returned by the city engineer. Staff finds the report acceptable and is attached by reference to this determination. Part of the New York State's 750 mile Empire State Trail passes through this project site along North Street. The city of Kingston has a very solid standing in the county for developing trail systems, which connect to one of a variety of venues and corridors. At these linkage, as these linkages grow and expand, so does the attraction of the community. The pandemic has triggered a much broader interest in various trail networks and some means of linking people to places. The applicants have proposed a public access plan, which is currently under review. The planning board is part of final site plan slash special use permit review will be adopting and accepting a plan that the applicant will then be mandated to follow. The periodic reviews as the project goes forward with future people who are returning and reevaluating and plan to address changing uses and landscapes.
This is.
Sorry, Kyla, I, I don't know if you want to add anything about, um, just the fact that Linsley Avenue is used for, uh, the, the hotel guests and will not be used for the events. Um, you know, just to mention in there, because we talked about the event.
Okay.
And previous traffic studies. And all that traffic is still going to come in off North Street.
Okay.
So I think that the attachment of that report there that you just described, uh, satisfies the moderate to large impact that may occur with this particular section.
Okay. Um, so then, I believe, no, 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 and no. Okay, so we are done with this particular portion. So we move on back to that other form.
Can I just, not to return to something, but consistency with community plan? Do you want to mention any, it, it gotta know, but the coastal consistency review has to be done by the, um, heritage area? So I don't know if, if we can actually say it's consistent. It's kind of things of what comes first.
Well, we have to complete our seeker before they can do their coastal consistency.
This is Wayne, I'm, I'm okay with how he answered that.
Anybody else? Matt, thoughts on that?
No, I'm, I agree.
Kevin?
I agree with, uh, following the steps that you've mentioned, one before the other.
Okay, Chuck?
I agree also.
And Robert?
I'm in concurrence.
And Vince, you're not on my screen now, but.
I'm also in concurrence.
Okay. All right.
So now you want the last?
Yeah, the last page of part three. First, and then it starts at the bottom, but that's just informational stuff. I can check that.
We can check A on that one, right? I would, I, I think we've, we've. Are we still there? Okay.
This Sue, is that what you want?
Uh, yep. Okay, so under the determination of significance, obviously, we know it's a type one action. And we're have part one, two, and three completed. And upon the review of the information recorded on the EAF as noted, plus the additional support information, which will all be the written pieces that we've just gone through. Um, and considering both the magnitude and importance of each identified potential impact is conclusion of the, well, we have to insert Kingston Planning Board there. As lead agency that, and then you have to make your determination. So just Wayne, I'll let you take it from here.
This is where we're, we're checking off A, B, or C, you mean?
Correct, yes. And this will be a motion and a second and a roll call vote.
Well, are we gonna, um?
We, I do have a resolution too, yes.
I mean, I think we can go with a, a negative deck on this.
Is there any discussion?
I think all of our discussion on all of the, all of those, uh, from, from section two, um, will satisfy that.
Okay. Would you like me to read the resolution into the record?
Um, yes.
And then?
Negative deck on this?
That's it.
This is Kevin, I agree. Neg deck.
Uh, I agree.
Okay, let me read the resolution.
Go ahead, Sue, I'm sorry.
Resolution of the City of Kingston Planning Board, adopting a negative declaration of environmental significance in the review of number 188 and 200 North Street, SBL 5628 dash three dash 23 and 48.84 dash one dash four, in accordance with the SEACER process under six NYCRR, part six 17. Whereas, the applicant submitted an application of plans along with the completed part one of the full environmental assessment form to the City of Kingston Planning Board for amendments to the previously approved site plan slash slash special permit for hospitality, use of end space, public restaurant, parking lots, pathways, utilities, a limited use access road from Linsley Avenue and other associated site improvements, and then imperons the action. And whereas, the project is located at 188 and 200 North Street, SBL 5628 dash three dash 23 and 48.84 dash one dash four, Kingston, New York. And whereas the amendments being considered build upon previous plans with the expectation that these plans will continue to change and return to the planning board and that with each rendition and amendment, the board will review previous SEACER determinations and make adjustments as necessary. And whereas, the board determined the action to be recognized as type one under SEACER and sought to reaffirm themselves as lead agency in the review. Said circulation was made on January 11th, 2021 to all identified involved and interested agencies as provided by the applicant and planning staff. And whereas by resolution dated February 16th, 2021, the board adopted a resolution reaffirming themselves as lead agency. And whereas the board has reviewed all supporting plans and documents prepared by the applicant and continues to work with the applicants to finalize the plans and details being considered under the site plan special permit review. Now, therefore be resolved by the City of Kingston Planning Board as follows. That pursuant to six NY, NYCRR, part six 17, the City of Kingston Planning Board hereby renders a determination of negative declarat, negative environmental significance, recognizing all conditions and findings as described within part three of the full environmental assessment form and all referenced documents attached. Section two, that all identified involved and interested agencies will be notified of the Kingston Planning Board determination. Section three, that the Kingston Planning Office is directed to submit notice to the state environmental news bulletin for publication as required by statute. And section four, that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Sue, this is Kyla. Can I just, uh, ask a question here? Sorry, we've kind of been working through this all day. Um, should we mention in there that, uh, previous negative determinations are also carried forward? Um, there may have been passed conditions with previous SEACER reviews. I'm just, that in response to the earlier comments about this being just for a portion of the project, but really, you know, SEACER is kind of a cumulative thing.
We can add a whereas then, this is for the board members, will add a whereas into the top of the resolution that goes through the historic, um, decisions made with respect to the SEACER. Is that, I need, I'll need a motion to amend the resolution to include that.
And then Sue, if you're doing that, you should also state that those previous determinations are incorporated into your, uh, resolution this evening by reference.
Okay.
I, I don't, I, I have to say, I, I'm concerned about that, guys. This is Joe Ariel. I, this is a distinct SEACER action. And, and while I don't have any objection to, I guess, noting, I don't know, maybe I do. I, 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 I'm not sure that that's appropriate at all. I'm not even sure that it's. I mean, again, this is not the site plan resolution where you kind of go through the history of the project or prior approvals. This is the SEACER determination on this action. And, and I, and I think that it's, uh, again, I legally inappropriate actually to, to, um, to, to, to lump it together with any o- other action.
See, my question comes from the whole segmentation question of whether or not, and maybe Dan has an answer to this, whether this is, whether we are actually considering this as an entire project every time it changes? And how that impacts, you know, whether the project is?
I believe that the segmentation issue, um, which has been addressed repeatedly, um, is really one for, um, you know, for the applicant to determine whether or not they consider it a potential, uh, problem going forward. And if the applicant is asking for a SEACER determination with regard to this limited action, um, then that's what, um, you know, the board should act upon. Um, and counsel for the applicant has indicated that, that he's asking for a limited determination. Um, you know, I would say we, you know, the proper thing to do is to refer to the scope of his request. So this is Wayne. Dan, should we, should we not include that verbiage that Kyla has just, has just suggested? I believe that the question is for counsel for the applicant to decide. And if counsel for the applicant is asking for a limited SEACER determination, and that is his application, then that's what you should act upon. I don't think it's up to the board to expand upon the request that's being made by the applicant.
I don't think we're expanding on his request. I think we're just documenting just a, a progression of the project as it has taken place. Um, you know, I, I don't see any harm in including that.
I, I think the harm is that you invite this segment, you, you're actually creating the segmentation by doing that. This is a distinct action. And, and, um, as your counsel has said, you know, segmentation only comes into effect if the perception is that there's been a lesser environmental review, um, of the project i- i- at any particular stage. I, I don't think it, it's, uh, you know, the action is being taken. This EAF that you just went through, step by step, was to look at the proposed application that this applicant is making right now. And that's what the impact analysis was done on. That's what the neg deck is on. And I, I, I actually think it's, it's legally vital that it, that it be, um, that it be as to this action.
So counsel, so counsel, is that your request?
Joe?
Sorry, I muted, I muted myself again. Yes, it is.
Okay, so that's the action before. So Wayne, I think, given that we've looked. Okay. So that's the action before. So Wayne, I think, given that we've looked at this project as a whole tonight, through the EF before us, we went through all of the factors, we looked at the project as a whole, I think we have to move forward based on what's been presented.
I, I agree. And the fact that, you know, that we may, that we're going to not include the verbiage that Kyla has just mentioned, that's what I'm going to propose, doesn't mean that though, that those, that that has not previously existed. So it's, it doesn't go away.
Right. The decisions are there. Yeah, either way. So that's, that's.
Agreed. Right. So, all right. So we'll, we'll, we'll keep the, the last part there out that, that Kyla, which, and I, I see why you wanted it, Kyla, but counsel is asking that it not be included. So I'm inclined to go along with that. So. So, so do I, by the way. I do want to say, I, I appreciate the, the comment and the concern for the issue. So I just, I just want to make that clear. And so I thank the board, I thank Kyla, and I thank the staff, and I thank the board for, for listening to my view. Oh, Joe, you're just doing your job, you know? You're, you're, so, all right. So Sue, the, you've, you've completed the reading of the resolution. That's, that's.
Yes.
All right. So this is Wayne Platt. I will make a motion that we adopt that resolution. Do I have a second?
Kevin Roach, second?
Roach is a second. All in favor? Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Is a yes.
Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Nicholas? Give me, unmute yourself, buddy. Yes. Matt? And Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Okay. That's it.
That is it.
Right. So, um, so with that done now, like I said at the beginning of the meeting, the, the open space plan has been submitted and, you know, we will, we will be taking that issue up at our next meeting as well as other outstanding issues that the applicant and the city are both aware of. So Sue, is there any other business before this body tonight?
No.
May, may I, may I make one request, Mr. Chairman? You, you may suspect what it is. I, I would like to ask at this point, you, you are quite correct. Obviously, the review of the project will continue. We opened the meeting by saying that we anticipate being back before you in April for continuation of the review. But I would ask that the board consider closing the public hearing at this point. I, I think once again that we've, we've not, we've really only heard a couple of different categories of, of comments repeatedly, which are basically, does it comply with the code and the public access issue? I think all of that is duly noted. Really, nothing's changed and, and procedurally, it would, I, I would ask that the board consider closing the public hearing this evening. It obviously does not preclude any further review by the board and the staff of the application, but it would, you know, it would move past that procedural milestone.
That's, that's one of the. Wayne, if I could just jump in for one second before you address the request to close the public hearing. I would also ask people to be careful to not confuse the term open space plan with the public access plan, because we are not talking about the, an open space plan. We're talking about public access, as said, for within the zoning code.
I misspoke.
Well, it, it has been referred to as an open space plan repeatedly, and I just want the record to be clear, there is such a thing as an open space plan, but that's not what's before the board.
Oh, but thank you for clarin- clarifying that, Dan. And yes, Joe, and for the rest of the board, I do have a bullet here that was go, I was gonna float the idea of closing the public hearing on this. We have had a lot of, of input from the public. And I, I, I think it'll be just repetitive at this time. You know, we've kept it open for quite, quite some time now. So I am inclined to, in fact, I'm gonna make a motion that we close the public hearing on this. So I have a second on that.
Kevin Roach, second?
Roach has a second on that. Wayne Platt is a yes. Robert Jacobson?
Think he's saying yes, but.
Sorry, I'm a yes.
Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Roach?
Yes.
Motion is passed. We will close the public hearing. So I think that is it now. That is it. But this time I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Have a sec. That Charles, Charles?
Yes.
Second.
Paulaco is a second on that. Wayne Platt is a yes. Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Roach?
Yes.
That is, that is passed. Meeting is adjourned. Vince, thank you, pal. I didn't mean to.
No problem.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Good night, folks.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Night.